The Winthrop School Committee meeting of October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-two at six P. M. We are meeting in the Harvey Hearing Room in the Town Hall, one Metcalf Square. We are being broadcast live. May I have the roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Luteri?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Mitucci?
Yep.
Ms. Barry?
Yeah.
Ms. Powell?
Here. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Barry, can you lead us?
Sure. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any public comment tonight? Seeing none, we are going to have delegates and visitors, and I'm going to ask that we take our new business out of order by motion, please, so that we can hear from our town CFO, Tony Marino, who is here tonight to explain a...
Motion to take the agenda out of order.
Any discussion? All those in favor, can I have a roll?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Luteri?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Mr. Mitucci?
Yep.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. Mr. Marino? Yes, who was yours?
Thanks for having me.
Thank you for coming.
So I just wanted to come in, wanted to introduce myself and say hi. I've been here about, this is about five months now, so a lot going on, but we are getting ready to go into budget season again. And as this board probably knows, we were looking for a town CFO as one of the positions. As on the school side and the town side, finding good finance people is getting harder and harder. There's not a lot of people out there, a lot of retirees, not a lot of people getting into it. So after many conversations with Lisa and looking at, you know, where we stand, we decided, well, we're all on the second floor. We do a lot of collaboration now. It just made a lot of sense that we look for maybe a town CFO slash school business manager to that title. And the sort of the pecking order we planned on that would be, you know, it'd be a dual report to Lisa and I, this person. Our budgets are, while they're not combined, they certainly all come from the same source of funds, so it just made a lot of sense. And then we would have, you know, on our end, it's the chief, the assistant chief financial officer, Robbie Powers, and then Noel for the school side. And then they would both report up to this person, he or she, whoever we hire. It just seems to make a lot of sense. I was originally going to post it as an assistant town manager slash CFO, but this, one, it does a couple of things. It allows us to maybe advertise a salary at a little higher rate, so we can kind of attract somebody to maybe, you know, I hate to say poach, but pull somebody from another town that might see this as an opportunity for them and get them in. And it also just, it creates more efficiencies for us. You know, obviously, we're probably a little short-staffed on our accounting side. The school's definitely got, you know, needs some additional help on their accounting side. Having this one person and letting everybody else in place just seems to work. This has already sort of been proposed. The town council voted on this a while ago. We sort of had this position, I think, before and got away from it. We already do shared HR on some level. We got, you know, some money's come from the school budget to do HR, so this just seems to be the next logical step. And eventually, we'll roll into, the school committee may not know, is we're proposing on the town side to do a, on the facility side, to do a facilities needs assessment of all the town and schools buildings. That'll allow us to, you, usually, ah, sorry, utilizing a program you already have, School Dude, which is now called Brightly. We're going to buy it on the town side and then order the facilities needs assessment, which will tie into all of that software. And again, more collaboration on the facility side. I think we can, you know, we're all, they're all town assets, whether it's town or school, they're all town assets, so we need to keep them in pain. So I think this is just the next logical step. I just wanted to inform the school committee, we're working on a combined job description now that we'd like to get out before the end of the month and then, you know, try to get that position hired. We did hire, just to increase our outreach, Community Paradigm, the search firm that hired me for this position, and John Petron gave us a price. We're going to be spending eight thousand dollars to have them do the search. I had it all ready to go, but then we pulled it back and said, hold on, we got a new job description coming your way, so we're going to advertise it doing that. So I just wanted to, you know, get out in front of it. I've spoken to a few members individually, but I wanted to get in front of the whole school committee and sort of let them know and go from there. Let everybody know, so.
So does this position replace some costs that we have now?
No, I think it's just going to create more efficiency and, you know, deep, allow you more flexibility. It's going to probably increase a little bit of cost. I think if, you know, the town's got a hundred and fifty thousand earmarked right now, so if we advertise a position at a little higher rate, say we land at one seventy, you know, we would think in the schools, the school would pick up the delta, the twenty thousand dollars for this year.
Okay.
And then go from there.
I think one of the pieces that, there are a number of pieces that I think it would be helpful in. And we utilize the town quite a bit on our side for, we sort of flew without a certified school business manager for a long time. So there are many aspects of our accounting practices and procurement and things like that that we have really been cleaning up since Noel came on board and working with Robbie to make sure that we have our ducks in a row for audits and the like. I think someplace we may find savings would be in the end of the year report. Right now, we subcontract that end of the year report out.
Yeah, currently, yeah.
And I would imagine that a CFO with school business manager licensure, along with Noel and working with Robbie, would be able to complete the end of the year report, which right now, I think we pay about, I think about twelve to twenty thousand.
Yeah, between twelve and twenty thousand.
You know, depending upon where we're at.
Okay.
Grants, grant management has become sort of like an Olympic sport over the last couple of years, because we've incurred a lot of grants, a lot of state grants, which we're not used to. You know, a lot of the COVID grants and continuing along with those, at least for the next two years, with the ESAR funding. So hopefully, you know, that, that just makes a lot more work for the end of the year report. And I think from a financial perspective, tweaking a lot of the things that we do will allow us to actually save money in the way we're doing things. And, and again, you know, to Tony's point, it's one big part of money, which we understand, but the day-to-day management of the school's budget and everything we do from the time we're appropriated our funding will still rest with our school business manager proper in, in the business office that we have. But there are a lot of higher-level things. Procurement is a big one. When you put RFPs out for things like technology, Balsam for one, you know, school lunch being another one. Those are pretty big, big-ticket items. In years past, the town has been gracious to have, it used to be Monica Ford would work it on the town side. We didn't pay for that. However, with that arrangement that we had going back quite a few years ago, when we sort of co-mingled HR, I believe, custodial, so facilities management, which we still use, we still pay into sort of human resources for the benefits piece. Our school district still pays into that, the town manages all the onboarding and day-to-day business of that.
Okay.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Would this new role also help with grant writing or no?
Probably not, but maybe, maybe grant, making sure that the grant management and the allocation of the funds, the drawing down of the funds, you know, you never want to return grant funds, so making sure the expenditures. But the grant writing pretty much lies with Laurie Galvin, Kathy Delvento, and myself.
And then Rachel Kelly on the town side, yeah.
And Rachel on the town side. But I'm sure, you know, now having more relationships on the town side, being able to lean on Rachel. We've never had a problem asking her a question.
Yeah.
Or a concern, but most of our grants are entitlement grants, the competitive grants that, that we receive, like the Twenty-First Century Grant.
I was thinking more in terms of like looking for the grants that are available and then applying for them.
Yeah, yeah.
I would say like we get, the state's pretty good about notifying us about those, between the state, the state reps. Like I got one today from Jeff Turco. Like we get notified about them a lot, and believe it or not, getting the money's not the hard part. It's the grant administration. It's managing the grant, follow-through, making sure we spend it, making sure we close it out properly. And that's really with these, all these positions, having one person at the top's going to increase our efficiency.
And then the second question I had is, you mentioned that the salary would be slightly higher than what you had earmarked and that you would be looking for the school to make up the delta?
Yes.
Is that something that is negotiable with that? I, I just wonder, like, do we have the room in, in the budget to, to carry that?
So I think it's something that, that we would have to sit down and talk about, how much could this, I mean, we're in a budget year that's already been approved.
Right.
And so if we're not going to do the end of the year report, is there room to move that money? And if that was the case, and we would sort of look at the budget along with Noel and figure that out. But the school committee would have to approve moving any of that money. And then you'd have to approve it again going into the new school budget year.
Yeah.
In terms of where that may come from.
Yeah, my only concern is that we didn't do certain things this year that we had wanted to do because we need, we didn't have the money for it, you know, Band being one of them, I think, another foreign language teacher or something like that. So that would be my only concern.
So to answer your question, yes, I think it is negotiable, because we'll negotiate the salary and then we'll, you know, take a look at the numbers before we put an offer letter together.
You're also saying that, that, that we're going to pay twelve to twenty thousand to contract out services that we would then not have to contract out?
That would be, that would be my goal.
Okay.
In terms of where we would look for funding. I'd prefer it to be someplace that's already earmarked to do some level of auditing.
Yeah.
Or support.
That makes sense.
For the business, for our business department. We're very small. We have one payroll person. We have one accounts payable person that manages purchase orders for the entire school district and one school business manager that covers all of that.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions? Okay, procedure-wise, does this need to go through the budget subcommittee? Okay, and there was discussion of having a joint meeting with us?
I think, yeah.
So this was discussed, and this was, you know, back in, I think it was two thousand fourteen. I think we were at the E. B. Newton, and there was a joint committee meeting between the school and the, and the council to go over consolidation, and we went over three facets, being facilities, finance, and HR. And the committees approved them then, and we did it for multiple years. And then some of them, HR facilities kind of still are in place, and the finance, depending on the personalities and the, and the quality that we had, kind of fell off a little bit. So now we're just reinstituting something that's already been approved. Actually, when it was approved, it was, it was at a different rate. So it's, it's actually, I mean, obviously salaries have gone up in ten years, but it's actually a better rate for the schools in this configuration, the way the town manager's looking at it now. And for this year, potentially, I mean, a search is, is not a overnight process. This, you know, at best-case scenario, you're probably looking at the beginning of the year at best. And so you're looking at six months, so you're looking at half whatever the original cost would be for this, for fiscal twenty-three to end. And then I think as, as, as budget negotiations start, and that's when you have to make sure that we're covered for twenty-three, for twenty-four fiscal twenty-four. But this is something that has already been passed by a, a joint committee on the schools and the council.
Yeah, when I spoke at that joint meeting, I didn't realize that had already happened. So that was the only reason we would need to have that meeting, but it was already done, so.
Would that need to be re?
I don't think so, because we're still, I mean, we haven't said we're not doing it. We haven't stricken it. We're still there, we just haven't used it. We've used two-thirds of it. We continue to work on the finance, on the human resources side and the facility side. And even the human resources side has changed a little bit over the years and the configuration of it, but it's still been in existence. And we never said we are not having finance. So finance is still part of it, we just haven't enacted it over the past several years.
Okay.
Yep.
And we've made some changes on the school committee's side prior to this in instituting an actual certified school business manager. Susan Echols, if you remember.
Yeah.
So we had already made that decision back.
Okay, great. Thank you for the update, and we look forward to.
Yeah.
Very much progress as this progresses.
Absolutely. All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it. If you need any other questions, you guys know what to get me.
Thank you very much.
Not now, I'm going home. Thanks.
Take care.
Okay, and we also have Matt Crombie tonight from the Winthrop High School to talk about, give us an update on what's going on at the high school.
Probably, it could probably be heard better here. So this is sort of new, and you'll see more people coming to the school committee meetings. In looking at sort of our past practices of school committee meetings, my leadership team has expressed an interest in being able to come in and meet with the committee and be able to show the committee, give them some highlights and updates. It'll be different by each member who does come in, but I plan on moving forward, at least once a month, bringing in an administrator or a person to be announced to fill the committee in and give the community a little bit more than what we've been giving them in our school committee meetings. And I thank the committee as well for, those of you who have recommended that and helped in, pushed me to do more at the school committee level and at our meetings. So, Mr. Crombie, you are on.
Sure. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. I'm very excited to bring you guys some new information about what we've been doing at Winthrop High School, because we've had a great start to the school year, and there's a lot of good things to talk about. So first, our enrollment this year is at five hundred and ninety-five. An increase of thirty-three students from last year, with a total of forty-seven new registrations this year. Our senior class is at a hundred and thirty-five students, junior class is at one hundred and thirty-six students, sophomore class is one fifty-three, and the ninth grade class is one sixty-four. So smaller at the top, bigger at the bottom, which is a little bit different than how it's been over the last couple of years. We've welcomed fourteen new international students to Winthrop High School this year. They have been here since the beginning of school, and they've been, we've welcomed them into our school and our community, and they've settled in nicely and are involved in, you know, many of our after-school athletics and extracurricular activities. So that's been, that's been great. We currently still have three open positions at Winthrop High School that we're trying to fill. We have, which are all long-term subpositions. We have two ELA long-term subpositions and one adjustment council substitute position that we're currently trying to fill, and we have posted. Academically, we're midway through the first quarter. Our progress reports for first quarter came out last week. Our quarter-one report cards will be distributed the second week in November. We'll be doing our quarter ones due to the term. Award ceremony at the end of the first quarter, and that's where each one of our teachers gets to nominate one student and recognize them for outstanding effort or outstanding achievement in their classes. Our honor list will be coming out then too, and will be posted in the transcript as well as on the school website. This year, we are offering eleven AP courses total at Winthrop High School. And we have two hundred and eight students total taking at least one AP course at Winthrop High School. A lot of them taking two or three. We just offered PSATs for our sophomores last week, and we're offering PSATs for the juniors in two weeks at Winthrop High School. And that's something we've done every year pre-COVID, and we're getting back to doing this year. So that's always, it's nice to be able to offer those tests to our students during, within the school day and provide like, you know, the traditional and secure testing environment for them for that. Last week, we hosted, we had a college day at Winthrop High School, and we hosted our college fair, where we had over, representatives from over fifty colleges, universities, and post-secondary programs at Winthrop High School, including representative from the Massachusetts Educational Financial Authority to support parents on the financial aspect of the college application process. It would turn out to be a rather large event for us, which was nice to see. I would say we probably had over five hundred students, parents, and families attend and walk through. So that's always a real great event at the high school, and it was heavily attended. Our guidance team, who did all the planning for that, was really happy with that. Our guidance team has been working really hard in the last couple of weeks, actually since I've been at the school with our seniors, on getting them ready for the college application process. They typically start at the beginning of the school year by pushing into the senior English classes to work directly with students on the common application, resume writing, preparation for the SATs, and getting them on board with Naviance, which is our system that we use to apply for schools. They've been meeting with seniors individually to discuss individual post-secondary plans for kids. And deadlines we have coming up for early action are November first and November fifteenth. We have a lot of students that are trying to meet those deadlines, and the, the regular decision deadline is typically January first for most schools. So it sounds like it's far away, but people are working hard at, at getting themselves ready and prepared for those deadlines. The FAFSA application is now open to students to apply, and the guidance councils have been working with students and families to navigate that process, which, if anyone's ever done that, that can be a little tricky. The guidance is also offering, is working with a couple of different schools in scheduling on the, on-the-spot admissions. And we typically do that every year with North Shore Community College, but this year, we're going to have Bunker Hill Community College as well, Assumption College, and UMass Dartmouth are going to be coming to Winthrop High School to do on-the-spot acceptances. So those are being scheduled, but that's always a good thing for our students to be able to have that contact with schools and get an acceptance letter on the spot. We currently have three students at Winthrop High School that are, that are using our, participating in our dual-enrollment program that we have with Salem State. They're taking an introduction to philosophy class. And during the second, it's at Revere High School, but we partner with them on it. In the second semester, we're going to be offering that dual enrollment, the same course. And typically, in the, in the spring semester, when it's in Winthrop, we have more students that are interested in doing it. So we're hoping that number goes up a little bit. And sign-ups are coming up soon for our students to do our Northeast Vocational High School trades exploration. So the Volk offers a program where students can sign up in December for a program that starts in January, where they pick three trades and spend four consecutive Saturdays exploring those trades. And we sent kids to those programs the last couple of years, and it's been really beneficial for them to, to do that. So that, sign-ups for that will start pretty soon. This Thursday, we actually have curriculum night at Winthrop High School. So our students, our parents will be coming in and following their student schedules and going to all seven of their classes to learn about the, the individual classes and the curriculum that is being pushed out in those classes in review of the syllabus and grading policies and things like that. So that's always an exciting night for us, when we get to have our parents and then meet our teachers. The curriculum work that we have at Winthrop High School that has been ongoing, our UBD curriculum work is continued throughout, through this year. It's going to continue through this year, and we've already spent a lot of time working on it. We're making a lot of progress. We just did kind of like a, we just finished like an inventory to see where we were and how far we need to go. And I think we're going to be done by the end of the school year, if not sooner. And our focus now has shifted off of our core courses, and we've moved into the electives in each one of the, the subject areas. So that's a good, that's a good thing. And we still have some momentum going there, so that's nice, because those things, we've been doing this work for a long time. But our students are definitely, our, our teachers are definitely still focused on this work and are, and are carrying it out, so it's been great. This year, we have a hundred and fifty new Chromebooks in circulation, which has padded our inventory. And we were able to give most of the new Chromebooks out to students, so it was very exciting with the first day of school for some of the kiddos to have new technology in front of them. In our, our inventory, generally speaking, is in good shape, but the brand-new ones is always a little bit of a boost for our students. So we're happy to do that. On the athletic side, we have two hundred and six high school students participating in fall sports, in a total of nine sports, including middle school, the middle school teams that we have, and thirty-four middle school students participating in sports. Our athletic teams are all doing well and competing, and, you know, our, our football games have been heavily attended. So we just feel good about being out there again and enjoying like those community events. Our clubs and activities are up and running. We had a clubs and activity fair about two weeks ago, and students had, had the ability to sign up for these activities. And now they're, they're meeting on a, either a weekly or a bi-weekly basis, and our students are, you know, back in their clubs and activities after school. Our student council is, you know, basically never stops. I feel like they worked all summer on just getting ready for the school year, and there is just a huge drive in, in everything we do. And, you know, and they, they control the, you know, the, the culture of our school and are always like pushing the positivity, and all the great things that we do at Winthrop High School come from them. And so they've been working really hard this school year. They have meetings every week. They have numerous fundraisers going on, and they're starting to prepare for our pep rally coming up, so that's like a big thing. So, you know, and this, the one thing that they do that I just, I want to mention, it's, it seems like a small thing, but every Friday, they do line up at the front door of the school on the, in the foyer, and they greet every student that comes into Winthrop High School, and they give away candy and other like little breakfast foods or whatever. But it's just such like a nice thing, when you come in the morning and like, there's a group of kids there all with a smile on their face, all ready to meet you. So that's been something that's been keeping us, you know, positive and moving forward, and kind of makes the community feel like a, the school community feel like a nice place to be. So upcoming events we have, we have a, we are hosting a, for the first time in a while, a International Parent Night slash Coffee Hour for our newcomers to our community and our English-language learners to introduce them to our school and review some of our programs and supports that we have. So that will be Wednesday, November second, from seven to eight at the high school cafeteria. We have an upcoming fall drama show, The Wizard of Oz, which will be on Saturday, the twelfth, and Sunday, the thirteenth. On Saturday, it's two P. M. and seven P. M., and on Sunday, it's just a two P. M. show. So we're really excited about that. We have a Powderpuff football game against Revere scheduled for Saturday, November nineteenth. That will be at Revere High School. The time of that is to be determined, but that's always a fun event for our students. We have a homecoming dance on Saturday, November nineteenth, Pleasant Park Yacht Club, another great event for our students. And our pep rally will be on Wednesday, the twenty-third, and the Thanksgiving Day football game will be home this year at ten A. M. on Thanksgiving. So a lot of fun events coming up at Winthrop High School, so. That's all I have.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
It's a lot, but it's nice to hear it from, you know, the leader of the building and hear all the good things that are coming up, and the fact that we're back in school. And last year, we, Matt and I were talking about it, Mr. Crombie and I were talking about it, being sort of like the soft opening last year, as we're experiencing what it's like to, like, really be back. And just, you know, thinking about the new restaurant that opened up in town, they had a soft opening. I always kind of wondered what that meant, like, you're just trying it out, does he feel like it? Like, I'm not really sure. But we, we really lived a soft opening last year, the more you think about it. And now it's, it's back to business as usual. And, you know, along the way in all four of our school buildings, now that we're back to business as usual, there's going to be bumps in the road. And we, our job is to move and adjust in all those bumps in the road and to communicate with each other, just letting our kids know that, okay, we've moved on, and now we're back, we're back to business. And I think it's a great feeling for our kids and for our staff, just to know that we're, we're moving forward.
One of, one of the things that, you know, is an example of that is, you know, we, we talked this year as, as a staff about, you know, bumping up the expectations for our students and getting back to, you know, how we were before. And we've, we've, the administration is focused on reducing the number of itis to school for our students, and that was a focus of ours. We talked about how we were going to do that this summer, and we rolled out a plan for that up to this date, which I get is still early in the school year. We've reduced our itis by fifty percent. But that's just a, an example of us trying to get everyone back on board with like, you need to be here on time. And we gotta, you know, we gotta get in and we gotta get learning. Yeah, we gotta get moving forward, so those kinds of things are the things we're working on.
Excellent. Any questions? Thank you very much, it was a great presentation.
Thank you so much for having me.
Good to see all the stuff that's going on.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crombie. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of October third, two thousand twenty-two? Moved by Mr. Luteri, second by Ms. Leonard. Can I have a roll call? I'm sorry, is there any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Luteri?
Yes.
Mr. Mitucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Yes. Can I have a motion to approve warrant SVW twenty-three dash six in the amount of two, three hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and seventy-nine cents?
So, second.
Motion by Ms. Petrie, second by Mr. Luteri. Any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Luteri?
Yes.
Mr. Mitucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion to approve payroll warrant SPW twenty-three dash oh seven in the amount of eight hundred and nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars and fourteen cents?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Barry, second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion? Hearing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Luteri?
Obstand.
Mr. Mitucci?
Stand.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. May I have a motion for a budget transfer in the amount of one hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and twenty-four dollars and forty-five cents?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Luteri, second by Ms. Barry. Any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Luteri?
Yes.
Mr. Mitucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. On buildings and grounds, we have, and I would like to take together, the Winthrop Middle School PTO and the Winthrop High School PTO meeting dates. Those are included in our package. May I have a motion to approve those?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Mr. Mitucci, second by Mr. Luteri. Any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Luteri?
Yes.
Mr. Mitucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. We also have a request by the Winthrop Gymnastics Academy for the St. Patrick's Day Invitational. And I am... And I, um, um, all of the paperwork for that has been submitted and is in order.
Yes, I just have, they, he pays, um, rental fee and custodial fee. I just haven't done the invoices, I don't want to make sure it was approved and then I'll put that all together. And he always prepays.
Okay.
And it is available. He's doing the, um, auditorium and the gym.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve that request?
Motion.
Second. Motion by Ms. Petrie, second by Ms. Leonard. Any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Leteri?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. Um, we have no subcommittee reports tonight. We already had our, uh, report from the schools. Do we have any homeschool applications?
We do not.
Uh, deployments, resignations, retirees?
The personnel, we have nothing.
Okay. Um, on unfinished business, we have the ratification of the cafeteria contract, um, from, that would run from July first, twenty nineteen through June thirtieth, the two thousand twenty-two, they have signed.
They have, so this is a longstanding agenda item, it's been on here for quite a few months. Um, they were able to finally get together, um, and vote to ratify their contract. And then we will, um, we've already had one negotiation meeting with them moving forward for a new contract. So this is an old contract.
Okay, can I have a vote to approve, I mean, a motion to, for the vote to approve?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Ms. Leonard, second by Ms. Petrie, any discussion?
Uh, question?
Yes.
So there's contingency line for this to move?
There is, so, um, absolutely. So we had planned for this as we knew we were gonna complete it. Uh, we hoped to have completed it last school year, but when we didn't, we have lined in the contingent, money in the contingency line to cover and it's a very small amount.
Yeah, thank you.
And I will note that this contract brings, um, our workers up to the minimum, state's minimum wage, although we're not, we're not obligated by the state's minimum wage, but this would still match that.
With the exception of the, um, kitchen workers. So it, it's, there is an increase in this contract for managers, assistant managers, and any kitchen worker who did not receive a minimum wage increase in the last two years.
Okay.
And then the new, so it's a little bit different than, um, the, the state minimum wage as it sits now, but it brings them up to current as of June of last year.
As of where they were under this contract, okay. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Leteri?
Yes.
Mr. Matucci?
Yes.
Ms. Petrie?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. Okay, under public relations, um, we would like to congratulate the Winthrop High School September Athletes of the Month. Laura, Lara Farrell?
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, Lara Ferrari.
Ferrari.
Ferrari. Sorry, not reading my glasses tonight. Um, for volleyball and Nick Marchese for soccer. The Winthrop High School Drama Society will be performing The Wizard of Oz, as was mentioned, November twelfth and thirteenth. Tickets are available for that now. The Winthrop High School Drama Society is hosting a ten percent night at the Winthrop Arms Restaurant on Monday, October twenty-fourth. That will benefit that show, dine-in or takeout and the bar.